March says it is 6 o'clock, so I will call the March 30th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Debbie Moore.
Here.
Cynthia Meyer.
Here.
Ishmael Harris.
Here.
Carrie Kayler.
Here.
Scott Long.
Here.
Judah Ross.
Here.
Kristy Coates. David Barrow.
Here.
Patrice Parsons.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. We'll move on to item two, Citizen Comments. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Seeing none, we will move on to item three, Items for Individual Consideration. Consider action to approve meeting minutes from the February 23 Impact Fee Advisory Meeting, submitted by Melissa Gustafson. Gustafson, Melissa. We've all had a chance to read them. Any additions or corrections?
And make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. They're second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Please let the record show it passed unanimously. Item 3B, Consider Action to Approve Meeting Minutes from the February 23 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. There was one, now I don't remember if it was for the advisory committee or the regular meeting. You called Cynthia Moore on one thing. You called Cynthia Meyer Cynthia Moore. I think he was on fences. It might have been. So that's the only thing I saw. Okay? Okay, so are there any other changes other than the slight amendment? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion approves. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 3C, Consider Action to Approve the Pecan Park Commercial Lot 5 Final Plat being 16.811 acres out of the Nancy Blakey survey, abstract number 98, located at the south of State Highway 71 and west of Hasler Boulevard within the territorial limits of the city of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A. There you are, sir. Mr. Trey?
Thank you, Commissioners. Sorry, Ms. Vial wasn't feeling well this evening, so you got the second string, going to bear with me for a little bit, but let me just go through this. It's pretty simple and pretty quick. I'm sure you're all familiar with the Pecan Park subdivision. This is the commercial section, the 16 acres on the original track, as you discussed. Here is a nice location map to give you an idea of what we're talking about. There are a few streets that will be going through here as things begin to final plats, construction starts. We will look at an extension of Agnes, which the city is working on. There will be a Greenleaf Fisk to the south. You also have an extension of Orchard Parkway at some point, once Agnes is completed, and you can see that again on the preliminary plat. All of the preliminary infrastructure plans have been approved by the city engineer, the drainage, and everything else that's required to approve this plat. With that, I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Joe? Commissioner Ross?
Are we, how many three streets are going to go or have entrance onto 71 going in?
Orchard Parkway is the only one, I believe, that has an entrance onto 71.
That's all the way on the western side there?
Yes, and this is not like the preliminary plat. So, yeah, it's, let me pull this map up and my clicker. Hold on. Clearly, I am not working this well. Sorry. Still not working it well. Let me back that up again. Apologize for being the second string. So, as you see Orchard Parkway there next to the south side, that'll actually extend down in time to Agnes, which Agnes will come over east to west, and that will be the only exit onto Highway 71. There will be no extension. What you see that looks like a road, which is an LCR easement today, is actually going to be the center of the apartments. And that's what's been built. Yeah, well, it's commercial, but it's all commercial, but apartments are allowed in this commercial area to a certain extent. If you recall, a few months ago, we approved the number from 400 apartments to 408 apartments, and that's what this first section will be, a multifamily. It's not really pertinent to the plat, but that's what it's going to be.
So, looking at where, at the bottom red line on that diagram.
Yes, ma'am.
That is Agnes?
That is what will be the future Greenleaf Fisk. So, there on the very southern end.
Yeah.
Right? That will be Greenleaf Fisk. This is Agnes. Agnes will kind of meander here in time to the existing Agnes Street, and then Orchard Parkway would extend. So, and I expect Agnes is, just so you're aware, at 60% set of plans. We expect to be going out to bid here in the next, I don't know, three to four months, if I had to guess.
I'm sorry, I'm still confused. I even live in Pecan Park. So, to the, I guess that would be to the south?
What you see here is Sterling.
Yeah.
Right?
Got it.
And this is Agnes. And if you take a right here, you go to Walmart.
Right.
If you take a left, you'll go to Seaton, once it's completed.
Okay. So where does that road get it? I mean, it's not on this plat, right?
It is, well, it's not on this particular picture, but yes, it's on the, it is on the.
It's on what's been submitted.
Correct. It's not on this plat. This is the overall. You're absolutely right. And that, you see it there?
Yeah.
To the south? That's Agnes.
Right. And so the question, then, if you go back to the other one?
Sure.
The question with the traffic, then, is what's the traffic flow? You go south of Agnes, you know, down to the bottom red line on the left. So how's the traffic flow inside this thing?
So currently, so what we're talking about, if you look at this map here, a small piece of all the red line is just what you see in that previous slide. The traffic will come from Sterling and still take a right on Agnes, like it does today, until Agnes is completed, then it can go east or west. As part of the overall subdivision, just so you're aware, maybe a little closer, just so you're aware, once Agnes is under construction, the owner, the developer, has a year to build Orchard Parkway and tie in. So we're hoping that those tie in about the same time and give that relief.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
So you've got, Agnes is going to be a two-lane street going across, correct?
Four.
Oh, it's going to be four.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And where it ties in to Hasler right there, is there any plans to improve or expand Hasler where it hits 71? Because that's going to be a tremendous amount of traffic coming from 400 apartments there. Once Agnes connects over, then you're also talking about Hunter's Crossing and that new addition back there. They're going to be using that road to bypass.
Good question.
So what's going to happen at that intersection?
So I'm glad you brought it up.
It's already miserable.
It's already miserable, and that's before 400.
Good question. Good question. So, just to give you some comfort, again, the apartments will have to take access off of this. This piece of Hasler you're talking about, they'll be required to take access. That's a different, that's not the plat. That's actually what we're going to do with site planning, but they will be required to take their access north. Right?
You answered my question with that.
Yeah.
If they were going to, that would eliminate some of it, right?
Yes.
Now, will they be, will it, I guess they'll have access off of Agnes into the apartment as well?
They could. What we've talked about.
But the primary will be from 71?
The primary will be from 71. Yeah, that's how they'll take access. Ingress and egress. You'll only meet one phase of the apartments, for example, that would actually touch Agnes, if that helps.
Even if that's the main in and out is on 71 there, there's still going to be plenty of people using that back access to go to Walmart, to go to all these other things down there. That's going to be choking up where Agnes and Hasler meet, which, as we said, is already just kind of.
Yeah, it's a mess.
It's a mess. It's hard to get through there. The lights aren't timed very well.
And McDonald's really goofs up that intersection, and I mean, it's just a mess.
Since we have a lot of questions, let me call on you. Please turn your light on.
No, I understand. No, you're right. It's, so all of that, just so you're aware, again, this is a, so they've met all the requirements per state law, and this plat has to be approved per state law. However, I do understand your concerns and your questions. We're currently taking recommendations on all those intersection improvements. Back when the budget was adopted for the first of the fiscal year, we actually went through and hired an engineer, and they're looking at all of those intersections. I've seen the first recommendations of improvements. In the memorandum of understanding with Pecan Park in general, we've had all of these same conversations and questions that you're asking today, and we're addressing those as they come with the appropriate steps. So it gets addressed at the site plan stage, not the plating stage. But yes, we do, absolutely, it needs to be paid attention to. I disagree.
Thank you.
I think Commissioner Barrett had a question a long time ago. Did it get answered?
Almost. So I wasn't privy to the very initial conversation in regards to Agnes a few meetings ago, but you said it's going to bisect through everything. Does that mean that the Pecan Orchard is going to the wayside as well? Will that disappear?
The section, the portion of the street that will go through the orchard? Well, yes. There will be, there will be a street that goes through the orchard.
How will development affect that natural area?
So the development will be up to the developer, but they are, there are some tree protection requirements that are written into the subdivision and zoning codes that will require them to mitigate that. And I'm not great at these numbers, but I believe it's 13 and above, it's a certain type of tree, is a protected tree, and then 24 inches and above is heritage. So, if they do remove trees, they'll have to mitigate that by planting additional trees.
Thanks.
Are we, and you may not know, but are we anticipating another plat that will be below Agnes for this unnamed lot to the, I guess, to the south of Agnes? Is that a separate development?
Yes. So it's just a different, separate section, right? I think it's section, maybe it's Lot 7, Section 7.
Okay.
But yes, those will all come in.
Hasn't been plotted yet?
It's been preliminary plotted.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And that'll trigger the additional roads being built as well.
I don't necessarily have an issue with it, but I'm just curious why in the Agenda booklet didn't mention anything about the multifamily development and just, and is that zoned as commercial? Is multifamily as commercial?
So this is, this particular instance is a planned development, and it has its own set of zoning rules, and it allows a percentage of apartments in this particular commercial area, and that maxes out their percentage. So the rest will be some type of commercial.
We've had some discussions about it.
Yeah. This is a unique spot.
And I have one more question. From Agnes South, you're saying that that's not, that's not what we're talking about tonight, but is that also going to be multifamily or commercial?
No, ma'am, that'll all be commercial.
That will be commercial?
Mm-hmm. And again, in that, in that particular zoning ordinance, it has percentages of what could be, some will be retail, some could be health care, some may be, you know, multiple types of uses. This particular one is, this particular lot, I happen to know, is multifamily.
Good questions, everybody. Anybody else? And staff does recommend approval.
Yes, and staff does recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve is your second?
Aye, second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Please let the record reflect that it has passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 3D, Consider an Act on Amending Article 2.4 Administration, Section 2.4.001, Nonconforming Uses and Structures by adding that the intent of the provisions will not create a disparate impact to residents. Ms. Carrillo.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is exactly as it sounds. When the code was approved, we grandfathered a lot of things, created a lot of nonconforming uses, and in meeting with the DEI Board, this is an important topic that needs to be addressed, that the intent of the code was not to create any disparate impact to any one particular segment. This nonconforming status does have an impact in some of those areas of town who otherwise could not meet the code. So this is simply an intent that we did not intentionally mean to do that. And I think we're on... Yep. I think the text was taken out. So the code amendment was in your packet? And it is an adoption of, at the introduction, at the intent of the provision, it is the intent of the code to keep authentic Bastrop and not create any exceptional hardships or have a disparate impact on any segment of the community or area. That is the code amendment.
I totally support that. How do we define that? I think, like the justice said, I don't know what pornography is, but I'll know it when I see it. So, to what, to some person, something might be disparate, another person might not consider it disparate. So.
It's really for us, the application of the code and the next, the next section of the code. This one, this one is a sister to the next section of the code on how we're going to apply that to make sure we don't have that negative impact to any one particular group. So I can go to the next one before we vote on this one.
Let's do that.
Okay. So this is Consider an Act on Those Nonconforming Structures, and this is, this section is titled Nonconforming Uses and Structures. We are only attempting the nonconforming structures on this particular point. So this one is a result, and the example that I gave in your staff report is, we have a resident who came in who already has a gravel driveway. It is on Fayette, wants to, came into a little bit of money, wants to improve that gravel driveway, and wants to put a concrete driveway. Under the existing code, he cannot do that because it doesn't meet, one, there's no parking in the first layer, so he'd have to either extend that driveway further back, and so the cost of concrete obviously then becomes out of reach. And so this is allowing what is already there to continue. And as we talk about authentic Bastrop, some of that was what we all embraced, that we want to allow the kitschy flavor. And then again, as we talk through drainage and impervious cover, do we really want that concrete all the way toward the back of the property? So an appropriate planning practice is dropping a pin to where that property request is, taking a radius of 200 feet, and if everybody looks and feels the same, that is an administrative approval that can happen internally. So this goes back to the application, and the intent is not to cause harm to any one particular segment of town that is not meeting the current B-3 code but is still authentic Bastrop for those porch extensions, the driveways, the additions that would otherwise normally have been approved.
I have no issue with this applied to residential, but I'm curious as to if it's going to be applied to any commercial properties.
It would be universal.
It'd be universal. It, I'm concerned that if it is, if there's not language to specify residential, that we might have commercial groups come in looking for variances based on this that would, that would keep us from redeveloping in the way that we had hoped we were going to redevelop with the B-3 code. Residential driveways, fences, stuff like that, I don't care at all, but when you start looking at lot to lot, you know, areas where you're, you know, maybe residential adjacent or your commercial property, that this makes me nervous.
So, and that's exactly why this, this one is important, the disparate impact, because now in the code, you can do commercial adjacent to residential, and the commercial is supposed to feel and look like the house and neighboring surroundings, so long as you can smell me, hear me, or see me, right? Form-based code. So if we allow it for residential, that's technically a commercial use. Would you not want to allow anything on Chestnut to make a repair, make an addition, make a... So we start crossing the line of, at what level of commercial do we draw the line? And I'm okay with the line, just need to know what level that is.
I remember we had this come up, I don't know if it was last year or year before, when Mr. Schiff came with the medical center, and our codes don't have anything addressing, sadly, the medical centers. However, it was a big problem for them because they were nonconforming, and trying to do anything, it was nonconforming, so they couldn't do it. So it's a huge issue, cases on both residential and commercial, and I think it's, it's a great idea because being nonconforming restricts everybody. So I think the intent is to do the best, and with an amendment to this, is the best for the city.
Well, and it is an intent to look and feel like your surroundings, which is truly what we're trying to do, right? We're trying to keep a certain flavor. And so, for example, those, let's say neighbors and things, that's commercial. So under the existing code, they did not be able to replace any of the metal siding or any of the things that makes neighbors unique.
You gave the example of the 200-foot radius as a hypothetical, or is that a model that other places have used?
That's been a model I've used in other cities.
Okay. Is there other models that would help us as a community decide whether there should be a residential versus commercial distinction?
It just depends, as I mentioned in the staff report, it depends on what the built environment around you looks like and what you're trying to emulate. It'd be hard to take something from Kyle or Buta, for example, that's newer, and then try to apply that to Bastrop. What we're trying to keep is authentic Bastrop. So the radius could be larger, could be 500 feet, and it seems to me that as we're normally walking the block segments, you're normally within a particular area, and that 200-foot radius will take in a couple of streets over, and as we know, streets change. Pecan looks a little bit different than Hill, that looks a little bit different than Fayette. So trying to keep it within the same nucleus of the area.
Was that your answer?
So if you want to go back to the grid structure, for example, of what formed authentic Bastrop, then you're going to go look at, the lots must be of this particular size, and the housing setbacks were of this particular size, and the side setbacks were of this particular side. And if we were to go and take a survey and an average of what those are and say, as long as it's within this parameter, you can go ahead and do that. That's actually taking a snapshot of what's on the ground. This is a more simplified way to do that. They all look and feel the same within a certain radius.
Any other questions? Pete? Yeah, this standard that you're referring to, is that generally for smaller cities or larger cities?
This is actually, this is a standard I applied in Corpus Christi and Aransas Pass, both, and they were both related to 25-foot, 20 and 25-foot lots. In Corpus Christi, the original township of the city formed under very, very small lots. They were Navy barracks and then Navy housing, so the lots were 25 by 100. In Aransas Pass, the lots were, it was a land lottery. The city was formed on a land lottery, and the lots were sold in 25-foot increments, so you could have bought one lot, two lots. When the city passed its zoning codes in Aransas, all of the 25-footers became nonconforming. So you, you could have four houses in a row on the street, and then you couldn't build anything on the next couple of streets or the next couple of lots. So this is a way for us to allow a continuation of a neighborhood, to allow infill development. In Corpus Christi, the town was much older in that section, and so there was a lot of encroachments. The streets had gotten wider, the city had come in and widened the streets, and so what would have normally been a 20-foot or 25-foot setback had now had an encroachment from the city after they widened the right-of-way to 15 feet, for example. And so when you had a house that has a porch that's now already encroaching, it was the simplest and most equitable way for us to allow a resident, for example, to redo a porch. And even then, those 25-foot lots didn't have parking either. They didn't have parking garages, and so most folks were parking in the front area. And so we had an ordinance that didn't allow parking on the lawns without an improved surface. So trying to work within the fabric of the neighborhood so it doesn't cost an astronomical amount, and really, there's nothing to grow on in an area that's already infilled like that. And so to not allow a house to maintain its safety structure and have to rip off a porch just didn't seem to make any sense.
Thank you.
And item 3F, under two, for lots of record, you use, it has a date.
Are we ready to jump?
Were we doing both?
Yeah, can we wrap up 3C before we move on?
Oh, sorry. I was just seeing, I apologize.
Can you have any questions on DRE?
No, we'll leave that. Thank you.
Carrie?
I'm still struggling with this idea of expanding a nonconformity with, if it exists within 200 feet, replacing, you know, if something's broken. But expanding an existing nonconformity is kind of sticking in my craw. I'm wondering if there's the option for a friendly amendment to, that it could be administratively resolved if it's within 200 feet. Adjacent structures have similar encroachments, so long as the structure is not being expanded beyond its current footprint. You know, I feel like that allows people to, you know, pave their driveway, you know, fix their driveway, but it, but it doesn't set up a scenario of expanding that nonconformity beyond, you know, the current basic location.
Can you give me, can you give me an example of that?
Well, if, if a property owner approached and said, "Well, you know, I have an existing nonconforming porch. I would like to rebuild that porch, no problem, but I'd like to expand it, you know, this far over, you know, expand the extent of the nonconformity, because look 200 feet away, these people have the same scenario."
So my comment to that is, we have created inherent conflicts in the code, and I'm going to give you an example.
Okay.
1307 Hill Street was for sale. It was listed as a two-bedroom, two-bath. I went in and looked at 1307 Hill Street and thought, "Ah, I could do that." It was a remodel. The realtor says, "By the way, did you know you can add to the back, you can do an additional dwelling unit back there?" I went, "Really? That doesn't kind of look like what's happening around here, and there's parking in the front, and..." But I can do that under the existing code. So that's well beyond extending a nonconforming. That's adding to something that's a nonconforming, but that's allowed in the code. So, all right.
I think you convinced me.
Are there any other questions? All right, let's go back to item 3D. If there are no more questions, I'll consider a motion.
I make a motion to approve item 3D.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please let the record reflect that the motion passed unanimously. All right, now we move on to item 3E. Are there any other questions about item 3E? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve item 3E.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please let the record reflect the motion passed unanimously. Now you get to ask a question in just a minute.
Yes. So, thank you, Commissioner Ross. So item 3F is really from, as I'm sitting with staff and we're going through, these three items are actually things that rear their ugly head quite a bit. If I showed you the list of things that we're sort of waiting on and needs to have an adjustment on, these three code amendments are going to provide great relief to staff, should they pass. This one is, this one is also one that is inherently hitting on the residential side. So the farm lots and in original Bastrop in the Iredale District were larger lots. Oftentimes, they were subdivided by meets and bounds, which is a legal subdivision under the code under certain circumstances. Our application of the state statute has gone to the points of pretty restrictive. The statute states, if you're not expanding water, wastewater, or road, you shouldn't need to plat under certain circumstances because it is an allowed lot of record. So we are considering, when somebody wants to add a water meter to a lot that perhaps their parent left them, we are considering adding a water meter, an infrastructure extension, and then require that person to plat the lot. Not what the code intended, not what we meant to have residents have to pull through the knot hole. The road's already there, water's already there, wastewater's already there. The code stipulates that you cannot have a building permit without a platted lot, unless it's an exempt lot. This is clarifying that the extension or the application of a water meter is not an extension of infrastructure, and therefore, they should be allowed to build on what is a normal lot of record. and therefore, they should be allowed to build on what is a normal lot of record. Yes, yes ma'am, I was, I saw the lights on, so I wouldn't...
Same question about the date. Just curious where that comes from, April 20th, 1981?
Yes, first zoning ordinance approved.
First what?
Zoning ordinance approved.
In the city of Bastrop, okay.
This is easy, I make a motion to approve.
Yeah, this one's, this really was, even Trey asked, "Are we really doing that?" And I said, "Well, let's go look at the pending items, we're doing that."
I second.
So, we move on to item 4A. Item 4A? This is a long one, and I'm going to apologize in advance. So, Councilmember Kirkland raised-
I think I need to read it.
Oh, yes ma'am, sorry.
Update on recent actions related to the Development Services Department, previously known as the Building and Planning Department.
Thank you, sorry about that. Councilmember Kirkland had raised a question about the Iredelle District and its appropriateness from a legal standpoint. There were two methods to get the Iredelle District approved. One of which was becoming a certified local government, which required certain surveys and the persons who were going to be affected to respond, et cetera. We had to keep track and provide notice, and then give an opportunity to opt out of the district. There's a process, a legal process by which that needed to happen. The other portion of that was in response to the House bill that said you can't regulate aesthetics anymore. And if you're passing any ordinances, you've got to do it by a particular date. The Iredelle District, as an overlay district, was approved beyond that date. We did not complete, as a city, the process to become a certified local government. We are now pursuing becoming a certified local government in the case that we do want to apply some aesthetic standards in certain areas of the city. So, there's a temporary moratorium until we can get through the certified local government process, which means we will need to amend certain things in our ordinance. And that mostly is the Historic Landmark Commission section of the ordinance. There is a requirement that when anybody wants to do a demolition or a change-out, that there's a 60-day stay. There's some notice to make sure that we're not harming historic structures, et cetera, et cetera. So, we've got to work that through the HLC ordinance and then resubmit to become a certified local government. Next, I know, I don't know how many of you have met him, but Georgia Remus has been working with us to go through the process improvements within what is now the Development Services Department. And he is here to give you an update of where we are and where we're heading, because your workload is about to get very heavy.
You want to take your stuff? Good evening, Commissioners. I want to spend some time just kind of giving you an update of the process we've been going through. We don't have any final recommendations or anything at this point, so this is really just an interim report to let you know where we're at and kind of what we've been doing. First off, to give you a little bit of information, I've been working in land development for over 43 years, both in the public and private sector. I have almost 20 years' experience working with the City of Austin and City of San Diego as an Assistant Director for Development Services and Assistant Planning Director. I've done about 25 years working with cities and counties all over the country in process improvement. And I'm also a registered engineer in the state of Texas. So, I've been involved in a lot of communities and trying to help understand kind of the challenges that they work through and some options to improve service. Hopefully, you can see that on your screen. There's nothing, no brain surgery here. Basically, I collect information about the system, I do some observation, then I survey staff, I survey customers, and I also perform an actual mail survey, not a mail survey, but an online survey, just to try to understand what the system is and what perspectives are. Now, the key word, perspectives. Everybody's got a perspective, and if you're a developer, you have a perspective. If you're a staff, you have a perspective. If you're a community member, you have a perspective. And so, where we are right now is I've spoken to a lot of staff, a lot of customers. I performed a survey, which I'll talk briefly about, just in terms of statistics. And so, we're at that stage where I think I understand what some of the perspectives are, and I want to go through some of those perspectives from what the customers have said. They have been meeting, there's a customer, Development Customer Advisory Group that Sylvia's been administratively working with. It meets every couple of weeks. They've met several times, and they have, I've been their scribe, basically, in terms of trying to provide a listing of what their issues are, what their, you know, concerns are and so forth. With that, you know, my process that I've always gone through, I feel like I'm a therapist half of the time. You know, more important than the end report is the process we go through to get feedback and consensus building. Because if you don't give customers, staff, perspectives a chance to, you know, provide you feedback, then you get to your hearing, and then everybody comes out of the woodwork and says, "Well, I haven't been talked to, and I don't agree with this or that." And so, one of the challenges that we want to try to, you know, get, you know, not have is, you know, I'm talking to all the customers and the staff and as many people that wants to talk to me so that I can hopefully get some consensus building, some ownership in terms of the direction we're going before we get to developing improvement strategies and recommendations. So, we're by no means done. We're at the, at the kind of the draft, current issues and successes stage, and I wanted to kind of go through some of the feedback. Sylvia and I both want to be very transparent in terms of, you know, what's happening, and at different stages, we'll come back to you with information. This is, you know, it's a process, a journey, it's not so much a destination. And I think process improvement never stops. And so, what you've got to do is identify where some of the resource constraints are to make it work better from staff's perspective as well as customers. So, the slide here is just to reinforce the fact is that we want to take the approach to have all three of those perspectives and then utilizing my knowledge where possible. Sorry for the small slides here. We've set, we've established this change management structure just to try to make that work. And so, Sylvia, as a sponsor, Karen has been the System Improvement Manager. We have a staff group that will be looking at it, looking at various steps. We have set up this Development Customer Advisory Group to be a group that will meet every couple of weeks to make sure that we get them to get on board with the direction, with identifying the issues and recommendations so that we have some consistency. And then myself, like I said, I feel like a therapist most of the time, so I'm just trying to keep things moving and facilitate the discussion. I feel like one of my key roles is being an advocate for the customers' perspective so that that doesn't get lost until the last minute, so that we have that information, you know, to be able to evaluate. So, how have I gotten the feedback? I've been meeting with this customer, regular customer, ad hoc group, the Development Customer Advisory Group. I've met with the Austin Area Home Builders. Out of those meetings, the group meetings, I've gotten about 10 requests for one-on-ones, and I've accomplished those one-on-ones with individuals just to get, do a sidebar, to be able to talk about some of their individual perspectives. I've done a survey, I got about 102 responses to the survey. There are three types of surveys that were issued. One is a pre-application meeting, so if you went through a pre-application meeting, what was your experience? And then, the planning application is anything like a site plan or subdivision or a rezone of that type. And then, the building permit applications for any type of residential, commercial building permits that have to be, have to go through. And so, you can see, I can look at the data here. I sent out an email blast, and then I got about 40 responses, and I sent out a second notice, and I've got about another 60. So, they're still coming in, this is just a snapshot. But the key thing here is, you know, we had 137 pre-application meetings to go. We got 19 responses, around 13 percent. The interesting factor in this table, and you can see the planning applications and then the building, we almost sent 1,000. But the interesting factor in this table is, out of the 102 responses, I got 42 requests to talk one-on-one just from the survey. So, people want to follow up. Now, they may not all, you know, do it, but the fact is, people have things to say. And the other factor about this is that these are not the big customers. These are the small customers, the residuals, the mom and pops. That's why you see 66 of them are those smaller types of customers. Now, there are people that are in, you know, in these other categories, pre-apps. Pre-apps are mostly small, first-time users, some, a few of the larger, you know, more savvy users, I'd say. But for the most part, the pre-applications in the building were a lot of smaller projects. And so, I've compiled, at least to date, what that is, and what I want to do is provide the information to the city council and then follow up and provide the information to the planning commission, so you can see the actual data. So, that's still in the works. I imagine that that will be an ongoing process, because people will still trickle in stuff. But that's a good way to find out what the smaller customers are thinking, and there are comments as well as individual questions. Each of them are about six or eight, maybe 10 questions with specific opportunity to add additional feedback. So, when I take a look at a system, I try to understand what the system is doing, and I don't just look at one area. So, I take a look at a variety of components, starting at the bottom lower left-hand corner. That's the core business process, and I'll talk about that next. But that's really how the process works on a day-to-day basis for customers. Then we have people interaction, that's more the culture, how decisions are made, empowerment, just basically how the staff works within the process. And then you have your regulatory framework, which are the codes, the criteria, checklist, all the regulatory type of documents. Now, the three bottom blocks are really the foundation for the system. And then from that, you need to establish technology and physical space to be able to have staff and customers interact. And then the organization structure is really more performance, fee schedules, and basics, some of the organizational reporting authority. So, that's the emphasis that I've gone through to look at that. And so, when I sit down with a customer or I sit down with a customer group, or I look at the results from a survey, I try to figure out what are the, which area are they really talking about? Because that will then give me some direction in terms of, you know, whether that's something that has to go before a board and commission or the council, or would that's something administratively we can do and so forth. So, what I want to do is give you a snapshot of some of the customers' feedback. And this is their perception, and I'm going to go through each of these building blocks with the few slides. But, and I will be issuing, you know, a longer, more detailed list. But I felt like, at this point, just to give you an early indication of where the customer's thinking, this is by no means what we're going to adopt, this is by no means my recommendations, nor staff, or Sylvia's, or even the boards, you know, the board and the council. So, before I go there, I wanted to mention the core business process block is probably the most important. And what that says is, a person enters the system, they get some kind of pre-application assistance, whether it be a face-to-face, a phone call, a pre-application meeting, and their goal is to get quality, information, interpretation. So, their goal is just to know what is it they can do. The second thing is they apply for an application, they hopefully will get review and get an approval, but their goal there is to get a decision. And then finally, they build the project, and they have ongoing compliance and enforcement. And their goal is to get a C of O and a final acceptance. So, the customers, behind the scenes, we've got all kinds of steps that we're following, but the customer really just wants three things. They want good information, they want a decision, and they want to occupy. And so, what we've got to do behind the scenes is figure out, are we providing simplified enough services so that they can get those three products in red? Or are we prolonging the process and causing a lot of frustration from delays and so forth? So, what I'm, I'm going to talk about the perceptions, keep that word in your mind, these are perceptions, they're not realities, they're just perceptions. And I think it's important to see where they're coming from. So, the first group is the core processes, and I've got a few slides. But on the building permit side, these are the key ones. There's probably eight or nine pages of different topics, of these topics. But the process is very, very complex for small projects. Building permit plot plan requirements in the MYGOV electronic submittal is not easy for residents or novice customers. That came across a lot, from a lot of different perspectives, but, you know, I can assure you that that process for small customers is pretty foreign. Requiring trade permits with a master building permit causes upfront costs when they're not ready. So, for example, if you get a master permit, you've got to get all your trade permits, but you have to pick your contractors, subcontractors, and you don't even know who your HVAC is going to be, going to be until, you know, you're getting your foundation in the, and so it could be months before you even know who that is. And so, they have to pay for those and get those upfront, and it doesn't make a whole lot of sense from their perspective. Sequencing of inspections is, needs to be more flexible. So, there's a rigid, in MYGOV, there's a rigid set of inspection sequencing which doesn't match up with the real world. And so, they want to have that be taken a look at. Third-party building reviewers, building process is all done by third-party reviewers and inspectors. And the customers feel like because they're third-party and they're out there, and everything has to come back to staff, that they can't really talk to those individuals on a one-on-one basis. They've got to go through the staff, and the staff then has to get them involved. And so, their frustration is more access. And so, trying to improve that access, and I think, as, and I think Sylvia's going to talk about the organization chart, but we're trying to look at capacity to provide a substantial portion of those, or a portion of those, so that we can have a direct control talking to the customer. And then, if resources are needed, that those would be sent out to the third party. Zoning, the perception that we were getting is that information at the zoning stage, too much detailed design requirements are too early at the zoning stage, when they don't even know if they're going to have a project. And that they felt that the B3 zoning process is very complex and time-consuming. Mainly from that perspective, is that they have to provide so much information upfront, and they don't really have, and that's true also for the preliminary plan, is they don't have, you know, they're having to make an investment upfront, and they don't even know whether they're going to be able to get the zoning. So, I think they agree that you've got to have a certain amount of documentation to show that it's feasible, but not to the level of detailed construction-type requirements. Plating process, right now, subdividing requires up to eight stages of process, multiple reviews of different drainage, different stages. And so, they feel that from preliminary plan to final plat, the construction, that that needs to be compressed down so that there's less stages to go through. And I think a lot of that was caused by state requiring turnarounds and so forth. But nevertheless, they're spending money along the way, and they're spending money way too early in the process to even get a preliminary plan, when they needed to show feasibility with drainage and feasibility with circulation and so forth. But they still have to provide a lot of information upfront. So, they're just looking for some simplification of that process. Application intake, MYGOV, without a doubt, was indicated as very inflexible, that if you miss one item, something inconsequential in many cases, you get kicked out, and you've got to come back in and spend $250 for a resubmittal. So, they want to, they want to be able to say, "Can we simplify that process?" Because there's some things that are just bare minimums that have to be in for them to review, but there's things that can be provided as they go through the process before they get to any kind of approval. So, I think they're just looking for some practicality in the process of what, the way they've described it to me. And they feel like the application process and steps are unclear for key submittal types, and that's just more simplification or documentation and education in terms of that. This one is always interesting, I try to pull it out. People interactions, I think, at least the customer perception is that staff can be very rigid in interpretation and not creative with options and options-thinking. Secondly, that, at least the feedback I've gotten is that some staff have not been neutral when dealing with projects and customers, both in the review and the hearing process, kind of meaning that they have a bias towards a particular direction. So, these are just feedbacks, once again. Legal opinions can take an extended period of time when they're trying to move forward. And the customers feel like there's a lack of point of contact that's not available to coordinate staff reviews and solve problems. They don't know specifically who they need to talk to to get something resolved. You know, your folks that deal with you every day, they probably do. But when you get more novice or intermediate knowledgeable folks, it gets complex. And so, there's not a clear point of contact, at least at different levels. So, if you've got a simple building permit, there might be a contact. You get a very complex project, you know, you might have a contact. But, once again, that's just the perception, and they would like to see some opportunities for improvement there. for improvement there. Regulatory framework, these won't be of any surprise. Commercial and residential subdivisions are difficult to develop with the B3 code restrictions. Develop, as they said, developers walk away because they can't predict cost and timeliness. And if they're trying to get money to build a subdivision, if we're asking for eight steps for a subdivision, and they've got to spend a lot of money upfront, that, you know, that basically becomes a non-project for them. B3 codes have, and I think you discussed this tonight, made all properties non-conforming and exemptions are difficult to acquire. And so I think that was part of the discussion tonight for the simpler stuff, but that's still one of their perceptions for the larger commercial and so forth. Transportation drainage and utility plans are not up to date. And I know Sylvia's making pretty good headway through that process, trying to get those updated. And probably one of the most common things that I heard was the submittal checklist should be simplified and similar to other communities. I think the problem is, is there's too many things required at the application stage, and if you have to submit those electronically through MyGov and you miss one item, the system kicks you out. And so they need to take a look at the checklist and see, you know, what's practical and, you know, what are the minimum things. Additionally, with MyGov, just as a side note, there are, I think, a hundred and something different application types, and you have to have a thesis, you know, have to have a master's to be able to figure out what applies and which, you know, which set of fees and so forth. So it's fairly complex. The normal user, I mean, the consultants and so forth, that's probably not a big deal. But for the, you know, once again, the smaller, medium-sized customers, that is a problem. Technology, I just mentioned MyGov, I won't go back through that too much, but one of the biggest frustrations is they start an application process and they can't save it. They have to start all over again. And a lot of consultants like to be able to set up the project, and then when they're ready to upload the project files, they can do that, but they can't do that. They've got to do it at all-in-one sitting. So it's very frustrating from the customer, and from, you know, simple projects. And too many clicks for simple projects, several processes are not set up yet. Most importantly, the subdivision acceptance, that's kind of paper now, and that's really for the customer to get all the sign-offs from the various departments and divisions. And that's not electronic sign-off now, so there's some pieces that are missing. And public access does not allow to view, review deadlines and timelines. They can look at comments, but they can't tell when their project's supposed to be finished by. That's not publicly visible. And so there's some things like that, that, you know, the consultants especially would like to know when their projects, when they've got multiple ones, they want to know when a project's going to be ready to come back to them. GIS maps are out of date and do not include parcel data, so the most important facet there is GIS is not really tied directly to MyGov. You have to go jump out of it, you've got to look at GI, you can go look at it, but when you go to MyGov, you can't really say, oh, there's five permits on this parcel, and then you can click and go right into MyGov. You've got to do a lot of extra steps. And many records are still in paper form, and it makes it difficult for both staff and customer to do, you know, adequate research for, you know, a project due diligence. And then finally, the physical space, there really is no counter or meeting space for small customers to walk in, to be trained, to help staff help them go through the application process, and nor has there been enough staff capacity, which we're hoping to remedy that. So the simple projects have to go through the same process as the bigger projects. And so what we need to do is physically see more people coming in that need help and not have to fumble around trying to get through the MyGov, and that's a major concession that, you know, that this customer group is saying, you know, if you take care of the smaller customers, it frees up staff time to do review on the more complex stuff. So where are we going from here? As I said, we're kind of at a stage where we're just doing the, understanding the issues. I'll continue to meet every couple of weeks with the advisory group. I'll continue, I've been observing and will continue to observe the DRC and pre-application meetings. I've been sitting on those on Thursdays. And then what I'll do is finalize the listing of issues. The customers met yesterday, and they are now, have been given the assignment to go through their listings and to, you know, wordsmith, whatever they want to do. I told them I would scribe it, so I want to get that finalized. And the main thing I want is for them to say, yeah, this is our list of our issues, so that I have at least some concurrence, not to say that it won't change, but some concurrence from them. And then what I want to be able to do is distribute that information, plus the survey information, to the city council members, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I want to try to get at least kind of that milestone in front of you, so that you can kind of see the progress. Then at this point, I'll be taking whatever I've learned from customers. They had some recommendations, obviously. And I'll begin compiling the customer feedback, the staff feedback, and some recommendations that I've seen in a draft document. And then, once again, we'll take that document back to the customer group, we'll take that document through the staff, and we'll provide a draft discussion on those strategies and recommendations. The bottom line is, you can come up with recommendations, but the most important piece on that is the action plan. So what's going to happen is, even though we have a set of recommendations, we're still going to have to sit down and figure out what sequencing we'd need to do, how much cost there's going to be to a particular recommendation, what staffing resources are going to be allocated, you know, whether it has to go through public hearings and come to you one, two, three times, whatever it takes. So I think the idea is, you know, we come up with recommendations, but that's not the end-all, that's just kind of the formulation, but we've got to come up also with an action plan. And so at the culmination of that, then, at that point, we'll hopefully have a roadmap as to where we're going with technology, with staffing, with, you know, regulatory issues, with a variety of things. So that's the goal. We're not even close to that point, I'm just beginning to formulate, but I think it's important to give you an understanding of the process we're going through, and then also give you a snapshot of where we are with a couple of those documents. And I'll do so, once I get it to the city council, I'll follow up with Sylvia and provide that information. With that, I'm open for any kind of questions, thoughts?
I have a couple of questions. You talk about MyGov a lot, but MyGov is the system that the city of Bastrop purchased.
Correct.
So some of the problems that have come about is because of the system that staff has to work with.
Correct.
Okay. Can these changes be made and still meet the shot clock deadline? A lot of the DRC was, came about because it's thirty days, and if, once a project is accepted, the staff has thirty days to complete it, or it goes-
For that particular cycle of whatever.
For that particular cycle.
Yeah.
Or it's considered approved. So, I mean, that's one of the problems, too, when, the problem is when you've had so little staff.
Correct.
And hopefully, we're changing that. Also, we love the customer advisory group, but we, because they're mainly developers, right?
Consultants, developers, real estate agents, there's a few other, few other folks.
Right, yeah. Folks that make money by buildings, getting approval, getting permits, getting, so, and then they're going to move on to their next project. We're going to live here in Bastrop. I just want to make sure that we know the animal we're dealing with. We love the developers, we want them here, and we want good projects. And I know that our city manager is well aware of that. But B3 is not the demon that it has, in many places, been made out to be. Some of the requirements are requirements that have been here for years. B3 has a lot of things that need to be eased up on, but we need to do that carefully, because a lot of, a lot of time and energy went into developing. We knew from the get-go that, when we redeveloped and we replatted the whole city, that there were going to be a lot of things to do. But I don't want this commission, a lot of folks are new and weren't here when we went through the pain and agony and meetings and rodeos. A lot of public input was encouraged. A lot of people don't want any kind of permits or any kind of zoning, and that would be disastrous for this community. We've seen what's happened in other cities. So I hope that B3 is not demonized out of hand, that you look at it from the process, that we know it needs changing. But, and when we have this customer advisory group, I'd like to know what they would recommend, and it's not throwing out all the codes and all the zoning. But I would like to see what ideas they come up with-
Right.
-that may continue to keep Bastrop as unique as it is. Give us quality projects. Don't have people flooding out because we didn't, we didn't continue with our drainage projects. Too much cement and impervious ground cover. So there's a lot of things that, that, I know you know this, but I just felt like I wanted to make sure that this commission knew that a lot of work went into those B3 codes, even though they need to be tweaked and amended at times. So I'm in favor of the B3 codes with amendments. And love the developers, but we trust and verify. Okay, thank you. Judah?
So to echo that, I've requested this before, and I'll request it again, that we have a workshop or something with city staff for the Planning and Zoning Commission, so we can go over and discuss and learn about the history of the B3 code and how it came to be the way it is. I also was curious, for the trade permits and the sequencing, and maybe that's because of the shot clock, but how did that come to be, that we have, that they're required to have all those trade permits up front?
Sylvia, I'll let you answer.
Yeah. Because I've heard this complaint from residents as well.
I'm a little bit gray, I'm aging in dog years, that's Georgia's line. First, to address the code. You're right, there's a lot of things that are good in it. And what we are working on today is the process. Regardless of what code we adopt or what code we end up with, I'm building a superhighway, so it doesn't matter what code you're on, what code the community decides to adopt, it is not a painful process, right? We can get through it. There's always a way through a code, never a way around a code. And the bodies that are here are the way through the code. But you shouldn't have to try to figure out what that means either. The example that I gave Commissioner Kaler, bet she didn't know that. And I can give you hundreds in the code.
And I was a planning director.
Yeah. And I can give you hundreds like that. Been doing this for a long time, I just tell you, trust the process. The code's not going out the window in its entirety. There are things that, as a community, you're not going to give on, you're not going to give on, and we recognize that. But I still have to ask the question, what is authentic Bastrop? And don't answer me tonight, but y'all have to go think about that. Because how do you codify that? How do you codify that? So to answer your question, Judah, the, I am going to lay the blame at the feet of administration, because the council and commissions are only as good as the staff members working behind the scenes. We cobbled together a technology system very quickly that required twenty-five things and required a technician at the counter to understand what those twenty-five things were and what needed to be taken out, because we over-regulated the system. There's already checks and balances in all of the codes, in the registration process for plumbers, electricians, and mechanical people, but we created layer upon layer, because it's easier to create a template that we just then copy than to go through the process of the work of making it simpler. To add fuel to that, we haven't trained the technicians. I can't tell you today that there is a technician that can do both the planning and the building side. There isn't, because we siloed them, and哪儿did those two speak. When you get a mechanical permit, let's say you're trying to fix your air condition, for example, and you have a homestead, and Texas law says you have a homestead exemption, you're allowed to do that on your property. We have cobbled a system so difficult that you have to apply, you've got to upload, if you don't upload, you're, it's not going to go through, it's going to sit in queue, somebody's got to go in and do it. You only need an electrical rough and an electrical final mostly, but there's got to be somebody who goes and unchecks all of the boxes. Otherwise, you're waiting for somebody to remove a temporary electrical permit, or some crazy process is not required in the normal course of events. We haven't taken the time to do that. And the way the system was built in attachment permits, I mean, I will tell you how we make the sausage, but it's not going to give you a warm and fuzzy. So untangling that, to make it to where, the Construction Standards Board saw a process that I'm proposing for single trade permits. And that is, if there is an electrician with an approved license who wants to get an electrical permit to change out a 220 plug because you've got a new dryer, he should be able to apply. We should never touch that. Staff shouldn't have to touch it, because we can catch it at the inspection process. They go in, they apply, we verify they're registered, and the, they pay, and the permit's issued. Period, done. Nobody touches it. They touch every single one that comes in, because there's something we have to do to it. The inspection can be scheduled, and the inspection should be a rough and a final, and they may not even need a rough. But again, we've got several, and so the inspector's calling, going, I need you to clear this one, clear this one, clear this one. Or the homeowner's calling, going, I don't know which one to get through. So it wasn't, that's not a function of the B3 code. And the pains that are being felt are not a function of the B3 code yet. They're not. We haven't even begun to touch that. We're still in the nuts and bolts of what got us where we are today. It's a painful sausage-making process.
Go ahead.
So this is all as it relates to using this MyGov, is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
And this was purchased by the city. You have a plan to streamline that or replace it with something else?
We're going to try to streamline it.
Because I work for the state, I'm familiar with bad software and overly complicated processes and old stuff.
And so that's the thing, is we got a code, we didn't put the processes in place to execute that code.
Gotcha.
You had a staff learning the code with no process and a brand-new piece of technology.
They don't match.
No, they don't match. They don't match, so.
So the code itself and the way that the process works doesn't actually work together very well, and you need to simplify all of that to make it move a lot some other. Okay, got it.
I'd like to tag on to that. I served as a planning director for another small city, and I worked to try to implement MyGov, MyPermitNow, and ENCODE. And every single one of them, I found them to be deficient in some way or another. It just, it does not, it should ease things, but they're built by software developers, they're not built by planning directors. And so there's so many layers built in to try to customize these templates, that it becomes really onerous on the applicant. And I'm fortunate enough not to have had to pull a development permit here yet, only a trade permit, but having gone through it and tried to manipulate that for a city, I abandoned all three. So I hope that we can figure out a way to make it work for Bastrop, or, you know, certainly reinvest in more staff to handle these, because it's just, I can't imagine how overwhelming that must be for staff, who's got two-hundred-and-sixty permits in one short month, trying to learn a new inadequate software system.
So my hope is, with the streamline that the Construction Standards Board recommended, that number will come down, so they won't touch that many of them anymore, they will go through the automated process. And then we'll have an audit every month on, let's see, who pulled a permit, did they have the appropriate registration? And if there's a pattern of behavior, then we address the pattern of behavior. We don't lock the system down, so that it is not an automatic process. ENCODE, the program that she's talking about, is a Tyler product. We use Tyler for financing. They are the five-hundred-pound gorilla in the room, very expensive, not user-friendly either, not necessarily what we want to use as a city. MyPermitNow is the, I've taken cities to MyPermitNow, MyPermitNow is Travis County uses it, and a lot of cities around us use it. It's probably twenty-five percent better than MyGov, but we bought what I'd like to say is a generic version of any of these softwares. We don't pay a lot for the software, and so its limitations are palpable every single day.
So I have some questions.
And one follow-up on that, I'm sorry, is the real costly ones, a million and a half to two million dollars, Exellos of the world, they're so complex that they are also, you know, very expensive, but they can do everything. But for what you have here, I think some of the alternatives, and looking at simplifying probably will work, and as if you get to the point where you need something larger. But I think we'll look at improving what you have, but if we have to go to another product, we'll develop that, look to develop something like that in a parallel path.
So I have a few questions. How was the advisory-
How was the advisory committee selected?
It was just a group of folks who had been the loudest complainers, so to speak, and then the group grew to a point where we couldn't fit in a room. And then I said, stop, can't have that many people talking. You guys work amongst yourselves and pick eight or so people who can speak for the group in each of the disciplines. So there's an engineer, there's the home builders, we have commercial developers, hoteliers. We have the survey went out to the vast majority was to the residents, the the small residential projects in the town. So the Home Builders Association was selected because we have so many builders in the area that it was nice to just be able to speak through one person who has ability to.
So would you say the bulk of the advisory committee are the 10-pound gorillas?
Uh, I would say yeah.
100-pound gorillas?
I I would say yeah. I would say that's a fair statement. I would I would also say that there is there was a common theme, and we, you know, what you'll find under my administration is I like to put ad hoc groups together because I want to hear their issue, and then if I need to refer them or we need to dive down further, we will. We're about to create an ad hoc Main Street group as well. First couple of meetings were is a lot of word vomit. It was a lot of just, this is wrong, this is wrong, this is wrong, this is wrong. But the charge I gave them, which we haven't gotten to yet, the charge I gave them is tell me specifically in the code what is wrong. Tell me what you would like to change. And they didn't come back with code amendments. They came back with process amendments. Right now, we're about eight to 10 steps more. Eight? George might say eight. The normal process in from start to finish is about three to four, if you work it right. We're at eight, not because of the B three code requiring. We worked it into the B three code that way, and that was staff's response to the shot clock. Much better ways to respond to that. So what they have told me is not related to code, is related to process. There are some things they want to change in the code, and I I've spoken to the chair about it on the the grid system within the commercial district. That doesn't make any sense to me from an operational standpoint. I shouldn't have Walmart or Target blaming me for not fixing the street that's in front of them because that's now a public street. There's better ways for connectivity and shared access that doesn't put the nickel on the city. But for the most part, there's been no, I got to do this, we got to do that, we got to do that. They are talking about what's required at preliminary plat and why it's required so early. That's what you heard. They're talking about the timeframe to get things resolved. They're talking about the things we have a review fee that's paid upfront, and we call it a completeness review, but somehow we never get to the completeness review because depending on how I'm feeling today, and I have evidence to show all of this, depending on how I'm feeling today, I might kick it out because it didn't have a North Arrow. Tomorrow, that may not matter to me. This is a matter of consistency. And when I can't prove up that I have a standard checklist that I follow and everybody's weighted the same, and I'll collect that 250 from you again.
Yeah.
That's when the angst starts.
I got it. So I also support the idea of having some kind of workshop. I'm new as well.
Happy to do that at your very next meeting.
Reading through the code book, I I've made it through maybe five pages. My question is, is there still anybody on staff that can talk about the B three code and the B three process we went through?
We're going to go through that here in a minute.
Okay.
Thank you. I really want to thank you, Mr. Remes, and also you, Sylvia, for addressing the problems because our customers are the paramount concern for our city. And I know it's been brought up that developers are giving these answers and bigger players, but my surveys that I've taken, which is talking to the residents of this town, have the exact same issues, all the points that you put up there. So these are all the same. They're very very common for the small customer or the big customer.
And I've heard that through the surveys, too.
And the three points that you made that people are so frustrated with, and you you said it, to be heard, they want a decision, and they want action. And that's everybody. So thank you very much for addressing these.
No other questions on this? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
That was item 4A.
Nope, we're still on.
We're still on 4A?
We're still on this one. So to talk about who's left on staff, we did do some major organizational shifts. And the biggest shift is the creation of a customer service division. Still have a planning division, still have a building division, but we created a customer service division. These three technicians, we had one vacant for a very long time. We had two positions filled. Melissa was in one technician position, and we had another staff member in another technician position. One did planning, one did building. Ne'er did they ever really speak. For me to go ask Melissa to go help me with a building permit, she was still learning the process, so we it things came to a stop, and they came to a screeching halt. I could tell you how the sausage is made about how many things are in queue right now, and it would hurt your heart. It would hurt your heart because it hurt me, and it was shocking to me when I opened the present that was Development Services about what was waiting in the queue. And the only thing I can say is staff was overwhelmed and didn't know how to manage it. And if they were pleased for help, they didn't come to me. There was not even a lifeline for some of those. I have projects in the queue right now from 2021 because we didn't really know how to handle it, or we're waiting for an applicant signature, or we were waiting for a fee. We were never really following up with the customer. So this this one is supercritical, right? How do we address those things so that that they don't fall through the crack? If that residential customer, so instead of addressing the customer service issue and addressing how we get a permit and how we're processing and handling our residents, we went and created a code enforcement division to go cite people for work without permits. Counterintuitive, right? So let's get to the root cause, and let's try to fix fix the root cause. On top of that, you had an administration who said, I I don't believe in ramping staff up, I believe in third party. So we have a safe-built contract right now who does plan review, and it is a not to exceed $850,000, no, $650,000. And we have an ATS contract who is an inspection contract in a not to exceed 850. So it's about.
ATS?
Yes.
Some folk, what would you tell us what ATS?
ATS is an inspection company in South Austin.
Oh, it's.
They do our inspections, electrical, mechanical, plumbing. So just between those two, that's $1.4 million that isn't going into a staff resource that we have no control over. On top of that, there's a couple of engineering contracts embedded in here that you won't ever hear about. We have a firm who comes to development review that is one staff member. His salary is about $120,000. We have other not-to-exceed salaries of $50,000, $50,000, $50,000 contracts. Why 50? Because that's what the city manager can sign without council approval. So a lot of this, I don't know that anybody knew, as we pull off the Band-Aid and go, why are we struggling to get things out the door? Well, we're struggling because there's not enough of us to get things out the door. There is not enough of us. And, you know, what happens when you when you continue to take on those mortar shells, right? The complaints, the, you know, yelling at the council, and and you just shut down. Been there, done that. You know, 20,000 permits a month, and I had four permit clerks. I didn't have a fully, you know? So been there, done that. And I think that's what started to happen, is we just didn't want to hear it anymore. We're human. We're human, right? You get overwhelmed, and you just don't want to hear it anymore. So this person, the Customer Service Manager Division, really is taking on that role of being able to pull the building side together and pull the planning side together because they've never been married here. They haven't even been dating. They're neighbors who are constantly feuding here. So you can't you can't operate a Development Services Department like that. You cannot. So Viviana has been moved into the role, into an acting role. She wants to see what that's like before she'll accept the position. Nicole has been moved up into a process coordinator position, also helping bring the two sides together. And then Melissa is was a planning tech, now she's a general tech. We're going to go through the training and go through the dissection of what it takes to be able to help somebody over the counter. And how disheartening is it to staff who has to get up and go ask a question every single time because they've not been trained? How disheartening is it to staff to not have the resources at your disposal? How disheartening is it to staff to have to return 60 emails and 60 phone calls, and nobody's listening to you? Nobody's listening. Stick your head down and do it. That couldn't continue, obviously. Couldn't continue.
Yeah, I understand. I understand you had staffing issues. I understand you needed to replace some people. My question is, how who else left?
For the B three, you've got probably Trey and a couple of other staff among in the department, but.
So it's enough people to have a workshop and help us understand what happened in the past?
Yes.
Why it got changed, and what it was changed to? What are the things that are working with it, and what are the things that might not be working with?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So the organizational chart brings a lot of these positions in-house. I was told that I wouldn't have good applicants. Well, we've got a plethora of very good applicants. I went back to people who applied in 2019 originally and started going through all of the applications. Some very great local people. We have a lot of good talent in our area, so I'm confident that we're going to be able to bring folks on board to get this run in the way it should be running. There's your volume report. And I'm going to tell you this, and I'm going to be perfectly honest with you, this really isn't the real, this isn't the real thing. This is what got finished in the month. This isn't what came in. This isn't what they're still struggling with. This isn't what the signatures still are. So, you know, when we're told, okay, we got 18 projects out on time, or we got 18 projects in out within this 30-day period, how long do those those 18 really wait is a critical You guys don't have that information. I'm struggling to get a report out of the system with that information. The categories that we listed are like hold, we don't have a I returned it to the applicant, so the clock should stop on our end. I don't I don't have any of that. I have I have to approve it or reject it. And we have a crazy permit attachment where I get to add a fee, but the inspections don't really go with it. It's mind-boggling. So this is activity, but I I will tell you it's probably a tenth of the activity that's happening in the department. I wouldn't be spending what we're going to spend on staff if I was processing 257 permits because I could do that by myself. It's not it's not a real number. So sorry for the sobering information, but we're going to get better. We are.
It's it's sobering that it needs to be known because the planning department has been the kicked down the road for a long time. We continued to grow. They were not given the staff. We had a revolving door of city managers, a planning, we didn't even have a planning director for a long time. And I did get an email back from Jennifer one time at 10 o'clock on a Friday night. And you can't, you're right, you can't work like that. And the people who have hung in there, we owe a debt of gratitude to because they became the, you know, the, everybody wanted to kick, like I say, just kick them down the road, and it used to just infuriate me. They didn't have the tools to do their jobs.
They still don't have the tools to do their jobs.
And they had fewer tools before. Sometimes MyGov is better, and sometimes it's made it worse, but at least you got a tool in there. But I look forward to, and I appreciate the staff who, like I say, who have hung in there, and I appreciate you taking on the task of making the process work.
Well, I'm hopeful, and they are, I won't lie, that's it's almost, it's it's been a shell shock for them, too, as we uncover and and we go, there's 600 permits in queue that we've not touched, there's this many applications we haven't called. It's a surprise to them, too. Don't don't by any means of the imagination think they were trying to hide anything.
Oh, no.
Because that is not the case.
We we probably Cynthia might have been along when we started with the subdivision revisions, and we were, we had workshops, we had several meetings with neighbors and the like. Oh, we changed their mind from on high, wasn't the staff. We're not going to go that way, we're going to go another way. And we said, well, why did we waste this time and staff time and our time? And then we'd do something else. Oh, we'd go down halfway down the road, and there was going to be a change. So how in the hell can you get anything done with that kind of work environment?
Well, and that's why the process becomes so important.
Exactly.
It it if the highway is built appropriately, I can drive a Yugo or a Corvette, it doesn't it doesn't really matter. But what we have done under the guise of the shot clock today is a disservice to staff. They don't want to get yelled at 25 times. And when they make a comment at the first time, at the first submittal, the facts change by the second submittal, staff makes a different comment, and what do you guys hear? Oh, staff never gives me the same answer. Staff never gives him the same answer. Here they go, changing their mind. There you go. They can't even, they don't even know their own code. There is not a staff member I have ever met in the 20 years doing this that intentionally goes, well, maybe one, that intentionally goes and changes their mind. I did have one staff member who used to come into meetings and say, how can I say no today? That was an anomaly. He was a very unhappy person and enjoyed saying no. I've not run into anybody else like that. Nobody likes to get shell shocked. So they're ready for the beatings to stop, and it's that whole, you know, the beatings will continue until morale improves. They're ready for the beatings to stop. They're ready for the workload to drop. They're ready ready for the resources. Now I just got to figure out where I'm going to sit them because they're busting at the seams here. I don't know where I'm going to sit the people that we've advertised for, so.
So I have one more question. Anticipating these changes that will be coming in terms of the process and all this kind of stuff, will that be in place before we really start to dig into the whole, you know, looking at the B three code?
Yes.
And everybody's going to be up to speed on that?
We have to. And most of those are internal.
So that we're going to have some experts that can help us, you know, with experience, that can help us determine what might need to be fixed and what we want to really leave in place?
Yes.
And I believe you and I had some conversation about the fact that we're going to be having a lot of.
Public hearings.
Public hearings and input from the public. Yeah.
And and what I told Pete at HLC was, if this commission decides that it wants five public hearings, then we'll have five public hearings. The it's not to circumvent this at all. A lot of what we need to change outside of the code in terms of process is administrative. And I think it would benefit this commission to have about an hour workshop every before every meeting to understand, okay, this is what this is where we're heading, this is what we changed this month. For you to know that three ordinances came before you today, and you changed and will go to council, and it's going to take, I think, last month, or in the aggregate that I saw, there was about 27 of those that staff wouldn't have needed to touch this way, that we're waiting for some sort of answer. We're we'll get there. But yes, workshops before, you guys have an impact fee workshop at the start every quarter, so we'll try to do it in the off. And I won't try to add to the time, we just might modify the time 30 minutes or so so that it's not super longer. But it would be very beneficial, so you're along for the ride to understand.
I'm happy to commit the time, so.
Any other questions?
Anyone else?
I love what I do. I this, I mean, y'all said, well, I why do you want to do that? I truly, I love what I do. I wouldn't do anything else.
So we have our volume report. Items 4C, individual requests from planning zoning commissioners. Are particular items be listed on future agendas?
I have something. I'm sure we've talked about it before, but maybe we could revisit again about the parking situation in downtown Bassdrop and how to improve that.
Okay.
I'm interested in that as well. Is that under our purview?
Parking counts. The district, I believe, requires no parking at the moment. There's no parking requirement, and so we've created what we've created.
So I heard a proposal from a number of residents, and I thought it was a pretty good idea. I'd be interested in bringing it, I guess, alongside Ishmael's of having a resident parking permit. So if you live in the city of Bassdrop, you'd be able to park downtown for no cost. And then, you know, as we continue to grow and we put in meters, it would only apply to people coming from out of town or visiting, which I thought made a lot of sense to help alleviate.